Are you guys ready?
Oh.
I'm not ready.
All right, I called order this formal session of the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners on March 27th at 10:02 a.m. And Commissioner Sterry, you want to lease some flag salute?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Bear with me as we go through this. I have an agenda from Wednesday, but I think we'll, there's got some modifications to it. So just bear with me as we get through this. Calendar session, is there any review additions or subtractions or anything anybody wants to add?
Air ambassadors on Thursday? Interviews?
Oh, okay. For you?
Are you not going to be there?
No, nope.
Oh.
Is that something we all do or?
No, do you not?
It's invite only. I didn't get an invite.
Oh, okay. Well, maybe I.
You just made it awkward.
Maybe I spilled beans. Hey, maybe we didn't want you there.
Speed dial here.
Maybe it's next, it's this Thursday though, coming up.
Could be.
Would you believe?
It's invite only.
Invite only? And you didn't get an invite?
No, my daughters are playing, so I recused myself from it.
Conflict of interest situation going on.
Yep.
Okay. Anyway, never mind. Never mind.
We might be at the chamber thing tonight.
I think I put that on. I think I added that last week.
Perfect. All right. Moving on, a public comment. Anybody have any public comment in the audience? Come on up. Anybody on Zoom, go ahead and raise your virtual hand. We'll get you queued. Seeing none?
Is it that bad?
I have to be careful interacting with the audience because I've been told before that some people doesn't, don't know what's going on in the audience because cameras don't point there. And then they're like, what are you talking about? I won't call you out, Mayor. Next up is department updates. We have Ken Friday joining us from our planning department. Good morning.
Yes. Well, I don't really have a whole lot, but since this is my first office update of the year, I thought it might be appropriate to look back and see, look at what we did last year. As for individuals, I'm happy to say that Katrina Faircloth passed her permit tech certification. And Robert McClure, one of our billing inspectors passes plumbing inspector's certification. As for just overall activity in 2024, we processed 502 land use applications. Now that's everything from a sign permit and renewal on or extension on a land use application. Some of those minor things all the way up to wine raised and landfills, things like that. We issued nearly 4,000 building and electrical permits and we issued 282 septic permits. Now to look at this another way, the state estimated value of construction, the amount is based primarily on the square footage that of what was constructed was just over $172 million. So that's $172 million that would be added to the value in the county if everything is constructed. One construction and land use category that we saw a large increase in 50% over the previous year was in accessory dwelling units. My hope is to have another increase this year in that number. Just as a reminder, an accessory dwelling unit is a 900 square foot, single family dwelling that can be constructed in the rural residential zones. It has to be close to the existing primary residence and it can't be used as a short term rental, but it can be rented month to month. And if I can digress just for a few moments, you know, my hope is that someday the legislature will add ADUs to the list of permitted uses in the farm and forest zones. Adding this use would not require creating a whole agency, but would only take a minor legislative change to really, I think, make a significant impact. And I, and I'm not trying to say that would solve our housing crisis, but if the state's going to come close to the goals that they set for themselves on new housing units, I think they need to look at all the options, especially ones that are easy to accomplish, would have minor impacts because the houses out in their rural area are already there and would give some additional options to the property owners. And I'm seeing that just because I was surprised this year, I didn't see anything in the legislature as a bill this session. And I know it's been a bill in previous sessions to add that, and I haven't seen it this session. So I'm hoping that they'll, they will add it maybe next time around. As for upcoming issues from our office, we'll be looking at requesting some building and survey fee adjustments based on the inflation rate. And I'll be probably coming to the board and asking for a future work session to deal with ordinance updates to see what the board is interested in pursuing as far as ordinance updates. And I was hoping to have one more piece of good news, but I'll probably have to wait a couple of weeks to see if it pans out. But there, there's a little teaser for the next office update. So are there any questions?
I have a quick question, and that has to do with hardship dwellings. And I know that oftentimes, you know, the argument for ADUs on farmland and forest land is that you've got someone who perhaps owned the principal residence, can't take care of it, and then another family member moves in and there's another option. So that's the hardship dwelling part of it. Are you seeing, what are you seeing in terms of uptick or not on hardship dwelling applications?
I'd say we have, they're more popular and they've been requested more frequently because there aren't, because housing is tight and there aren't that many options. And you still have to have either a property owner who is over 70 years old, you know, who falls into the age category or who has a note from a doctor saying it's in their best interest to have another property, another family member live close to them. But a lot of people qualify for that. And so we are seeing that a lot. And the, the issue then is when the hardship goes away or when the property is sold, then we sometimes have to chase down and get the temporary health hardship either removed from the property or modified to a non-residential use. So it'd be nice not to have to do that, or at least give an option for people to have a small additional dwelling. And we still get a lot of calls for that just because of, you know, family, change in family status. College kid wants to move back home while he's looking for a job. The members of the family are getting older and they want to invest in and move back, but they don't necessarily want to have to tear out their house if the family member they're looking after, you know, passes away, all sorts of reasons why.
So that's, that's got to be then a mobile unit.
Yeah, it, it actually was allowed to be, it's, used to be it was only a mobile home. In the 1990s, there was actually a Yamhill County case where someone had cancer. They had another structure on the property they wanted to modify. Our office said, well, it doesn't allow us to do that. We had to deny it, but we also told them, oh, you know, if you can get the legislature to change it. And they, they did. So now the options are a manufactured dwelling, a recreational vehicle can be a temporary health hardship or modifying an existing structure on the property, like a shop building or a barn you could put an apartment into.
That's for a hardship or for the ADU? Okay.
For a temporary health hardship, yeah. And for an ADU, you can also do that. We've had a few people apply. You still have the 900 square foot limit, but you can apply for an ADU to be in an existing structure.
And the ADU has to be within a certain amount of feet from the primary residence, if I remember right?
It needs to be within 100 feet. And I think I've processed one, one variance to that. And it made sense because topographically there wasn't a way to put it right next to the house. And there was another building spot, but predominantly they're within 100 feet of the existing house.
And part of that, is there one more square footage restriction based on percentage of existing?
Yes, yes. Yeah, it's up, I should have said it's up to 900 square feet or 75% of the square footage of the primary residence.
Okay, cool. Do you know where Yamhill County ranks? Far as permits issued to where, I'm just, I'm trying to gauge our growth versus other counties. And I've always heard that we're like on the cusp of being like number one, not that I'm like trying to be braggadocious or anything, but I know it's always been Deschutes County was heavy in growth, but I just, I'm wondering where we are at in that.
I haven't looked. I'll see if I can find out.
Cool. Appreciate that. Any other questions?
Fee wise, you're self sustaining. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, we're self sustaining. We, we didn't ask for a adjustment due to the inflation rate last year. So we're probably going to be asking for this year's. So we are self sustaining. The fees that are estimated coming in have been coming in pretty well. The only category that I'm still scratching my head over is for some reason electrical is down this year. But you know, that happens some years. You get more permits in certain categories than in others. It just happens.
Thank you.
How's the new home?
Love the new home. And I will say, I think, you know, I, I was going to lead with that, but I think I'd said, you know, thanks last time, but I'm going to say thanks again. You know, morale improved last year. We moved in February 9th of last year. And it was, it was great. I felt like we were able to serve the customers better. I felt like we had less chasing around after permits because we were in one location. And, and I am hopeful and looking forward to having other departments that we deal with on a, at least weekly basis, if not day to day basis, close by. So that would be nice.
I'm sure you hear this a lot, but I get compliments all the time about your department. And it is, that's not something you hear about planning and other parts of the state. So well done.
That's great people.
Absolutely. Thanks, Ken.
Cool. Appreciate it. Thanks for the update. Okay, moving on to work session. There is none. G is consent agenda. I would move approval. Is there any further discussion?
None.
None? None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. This is where it's going to get a little bit confusing. I have an old agenda. H, old business. We have our parks code that was put on by mistake on an old agenda and then was removed. So we're going to post, I'm not sure the procedure, but we're basically postponing this or pushing it to April 3rd. We will be talking about the parks amendment to the code. Number two, as of this morning, we were going to have, we were going to talk about Yamhill County solid waste for the five funding authorization forms. And Ashley's out sick today, so we're going to push this off also to April 3rd. Which brings us to I, other business. Consideration of approval of an intent to award to Roy Hawk Construction LLC for the Yamhill County 2025 overlay project in the amount of $785,907.70. I would move approval. Is there any further discussion?
None.
None.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to I two is consideration of approval of amendment one to the contract between Yamhill County and Chamekada Community College Early Childhood Education Educational Development Program, Board Order 24-066 to modify its funding distribution effective upon full execution through December 31st, 2026. Joya is here. If we have any questions on this?
Chair, I have a couple of questions.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm also Carla Hale with Chamekada Community Colleges here to answer questions in case you have any as well that I cannot answer.
Okay. Oh, the question was the number of, I know that we were looking for 25 in that cohort. How many wound up going completely through?
Ask Carla to come up if you don't mind, because she's going to have more accurate data than I do.
Thanks.
Good morning.
Any responses I can help clarify, so?
Can you give us your name and your address, please?
So I am Carla Hale. I'm the dean of education and early childhood education at Chamekada Community College.
Thank you.
The question was the number of, I know we're looking for 25 in that cohort. How many actually completed and how many are intending to complete at some point?
So we were able to recruit, retain and complete 10 participants in the first summer. And so one of the reasons for the redistribution of the funding is to make sure that we can recruit and retain and complete 25 participants for the next two summers, which was our original goal. And so I can talk a little bit, if you want, about what were some of the obstacles to recruiting and retaining more. So one of the obstacles we had was just timing and the efforts to get those, the whole program in place in time for, for summer. And that included programming all of the classes. This is an intensive 14 week program that we had not actually run before. So hiring all of the staff, the instructors, piloting that first summer. Also understanding that we, we went low with the stipends the first year to make sure that we had enough funding to cover the future cohorts. And we really feel like that may have prevented some participants from being able to participate. They're giving up employment to attend these courses full time during the summer. And so it was a hardship for them. We weren't providing enough funding to actually replace the lost income or come even close to replacing their lost income. And those are some of the things we're working on. So better recruiting, better targeting of our recruitment, and then also providing enough funding to support them while they're taking classes full time during the summer.
Are they, would they consider changing the timing of the class to accommodate for somebody that does have a job or?
So in order.
If that was one of the hangups?
In order to complete the entire one year certificate program in 14 weeks, they really have to go 40 hours per week.
Okay.
And so.
Full time class.
Be able to work full time and do that is just not feasible.
Okay.
So after the 14 weeks, they come out with ECE. Is it a certificate? And then does that give them the ability to go on to a degree?
Yes, actually, all of those courses will be counted if they decide to continue on to get their associate's of applied science and early childhood. They also finish with a certificate in both preschool and infant toddler certification, which allows them to be moved from an assistant teacher to a lead teacher after they complete this 14 week program, which increases their ability to earn quite significantly in terms of wages. And is where we're seeing a large need in the community is for lead teachers to be able to provide the childcare. We see a lot of centers, including our own at Chamekada, which is struggling to have enough staff to serve the students that we have wait lists on most of our early childhood education program. So.
Carla, remind, if you could remind the commissioners too, that this program, if they do their associate's degree, it does transfer to Western Oregon. Is that correct?
Yes.
So they could go and get a bachelor's degree.
Correct. So they could even contend. We do have an articulation agreement with Western Oregon University for a two plus two. So if they complete their associate's degree after completing this program, then they can roll right into the bachelor's degree in early childhood education studies, including getting a certification in early childhood special ed services.
The number of people who began, and we know we've got 10 that completed, how many actually began the course?
So we actually had, I think we started with 12. So 10 of the 12 completed. One did not actually start. They, they expressed interest and were enrolled, but then didn't start the program. One did start, but didn't stay for very long because of the hardships in terms of not being able to work.
And as far as outreach to fill this cohort, is that happening in, in high schools and in perhaps areas where we wouldn't normally, information wouldn't normally get out?
Yeah. And that's one of the things we definitely learned from the pilot is that we needed to expand our recruiting efforts. We work very closely with programs in McMinnville High School to provide college credit now courses. So high school students can begin already exploring their interest in early childhood. And so even some of those classes would be the same that they would be taking during the summer if they chose to enroll in that program.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
I would move approval.
Any further discussion? I do have one. Yep. No, that's fine. Oh, there's one more opportunity. I do have one more question. Is there, or maybe they already are, of the 10 that went through the program and completed it, is there a mechanism to confirm or at least know that of the 10, they actually did get either a raise at a job or got placed in a certain childcare facility?
So I don't have that information today, but we could definitely provide that information. And we do, I will say, I know many of them have continued on and are still students who are working towards their associate's degree.
And I think any path, I think it just, it'd be interesting to know what path they did take after they completed this program, if it's something to be, that can be tracked.
I think it's definitely something we would like to track and is, I think, part of what we would like to be able to report. So.
No different than if we gave it to a business, I'd want to go tour the business to see how well our funds are being used and, you know, that they're actually being made useful. So.
There is a childcare location, I suppose. It's a small room over at the campus here where the parents can bring their children while they're in the program.
Yeah, yes. So that was one of the other redistributions is we also recognize that childcare is a hardship for while they're attending classes and not working. And so we are proposing to actually provide free childcare for them for this, the next two summers. So that they have that on campus where they'll be taking classes.
Nice. All right. Any further questions?
Thank you.
We have a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joya. Thank you. All right, moving on to item I three, consideration of approval of amendment number 15 to agreement number 180033 between Yamhill County and the Oregon Health Authority for Public Health Services, Board Order 23-260, replacing the program element descriptions. replacing the program element descriptions with the program elements. Number two, city's readiness initiative, CRI, program effective, retroactive to February 1st, 2025.
Chair, I would move approval.
We have a motion. Any further discussion?
None.
None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Public hearings, J. None. Announcements, K. Commissioner King.
Let's see here. Last week on Friday, I went to a all-hand, what they're called, all call an all-hands meeting with Carlton and Yamhill. Rep Elmer was there and I think probably talked a little bit more about that just as time goes, some potential partnerships there and just what they're working on together jointly. This week has been a little light just with spring break. I've spent some time with my kids on the front end. And his wife and I both have to work and so on. So, but. And Commissioner Johnson and I attended another HHS orientation, the behavioral health and housing, I think, is the two main topics that we discussed. The heavy lift that that department does, I can definitely see how. Commissioner Starett, you've been there for, liaised on to that for so long, and I'm sure you continue to be impressed by the work that they do. And.
Well, I'm impressed with the dedication of the people.
Yeah.
There are definitely, a lot of them, their hearts really in it.
Yeah. And you can, they say that and you can tell it that they're there because they love and serve the community. And so I'm always very, very much appreciate the people that work there. And yeah, a couple of their little chamber events and so on throughout the week. But like I said, fairly light week. I tried to have a light week for spring break and spend some time with my kids.
Do you wanna touch on Lipsec from?
Oh, yeah. Sorry, Lipsec yesterday. He'll be here, I think, next week for, to present a little bit more about what we talked about. But I forgot to bring my notes on that.
No, that's fine. I wrote down just a couple of little notes I thought were, I just wanted to make sure I didn't steal your.
No, no, go ahead.
Mr. Lynch gave a, just a rough overview on our youth programs. And I, I found it interesting that we're actually doing better at keeping the youth out of the juvenile system.
Two point four or five percent or something. Yeah.
So I thought that was something that I gleaned from the meeting yesterday. But, okay, good?
Yeah, good.
All right. Moving on. Commissioner Starett?
Do you wanna continue?
Sure. Yeah, heck yeah. Yep. So last Thursday, Fair Board meeting, we interviewed an applicant. And he will be coming hopefully before us next week or the week after that as a recommendation to be added to the Fair Board. He's a longtime Yamhill County resident, very involved in the fair and his own youth and his family in the 4-H. So he's gonna be a great addition. And he's also on the planning commission. So, kinda cool. Seems like there's a lot more people out there wanting to be committed to different committees and boards throughout Yamhill County. So that's very encouraging. Friday, had a great tour with Merkley's representative Gustavo. Our main focus was going around to a couple of different parks that are underdeveloped and not accessible to start seeing if, seeing if there's any funding opportunities out there for the big-ticket items. One is gonna be Rainbow Lake and see if we can't figure out some funding opportunities for that to get dredged and get it kind of whipped back into shape a little bit. And then we stopped by Juliet Park, which is one park that we've had since 1975. It was actually donated from Mack Water and Light because it used to be an old power plant, part of two powerhouse, and Juliet were combined properties. And they were donated in the mid 70s. Anyway, gorgeous properties. Seeing what we can do for construction costs to get covered, to just at least get them accessible to the public. Talked about that. Joya joined us on that and Travis Pease joined us on that tour. And I thought it went well. A little bit wet, but we walked around a little bit of Mesker Park and we walked around Juliet and I thought it went well. Tuesday was McMinnville City Council meeting. They discussed, the, I think the pertinent thing for Yamhill County that they discussed was their housing production strategy. They're getting towards the end of that. And one of the key factors in that is they need to assess and utilize properties within the city limits. And I think the fair fits right into that, the fair property. No matter how that looks for us, if we're relocating or not, it definitely needs to be a part of the discussion for the city of McMinnville, whether it's rezoning to maximize our value or rezoning to maximize the use for the city for the urban growth boundary strategies. So that's great to hear. And let's see, what else do I have here? Got Wednesday was Lipsec. Commissioner King touched on that and I followed up. Tonight is, we mentioned it during our calendar session. Yeah. And I had a picture of it here. If I can get the exact times and dates.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock at the Lafayette Community Center.
Looking at the mayor.
We got the.
So it's chambers after hours. It's Mack and Newburgh combined. It will be in Lafayette. And it'll be, it'll be to celebrate the business and community of Lafayette.
This is a quarterly joint effort that both chambers are trying to do and in the smaller towns to try to reach out to be just more supportive of those businesses in those communities outside of just the two bigger towns. So quarterly, you'll see these joint chambers. I don't know where the next one will be yet, John, if you guys probably don't know either. But five o'clock Lafayette Community Center, right? And, yeah.
Is this the first one or?
Yes.
Nice. Okay.
We've done other joint greeters in the mornings and after hours, like during Christmas time, usually they're really big. But I think both chambers have had a little bit of a struggle to get individual, individually to get these greeters off the, or the after-hours events off the ground. So the hope is the cross would be really great. They've had great success with the greeters in the mornings when they've done joints. The last one had, I think, 160 people or so at it. So.
Fantastic.
Really a great opportunity for businesses to network and be together. So hopefully this one, we pack Lafayette.
Cool. Well, I plan on being there. So I got some Salem business at the Capitol this afternoon, but I plan to be back for that. So.
Well, I'll be good to drive by because I have CPRD board meeting tonight at six, so it'll be a cameo appearance. Any event, April could work that out. A couple of things. Wanted to bring folks up to speed. Housing Authority was this week. I really am focusing on trying to find out how are any federal impacts would impact our community. And there are none to our clients in terms of housing. What there would be from what was shared at the board meeting was some consolidation of offices. For instance, the Portland HUD office is, could potentially be sold. The Seattle office could potentially be closed. So that means that any kind of administrative outside for HUD would be done with perhaps a San Francisco office. But that does not impact any services or funding for, for its in Section 8 or any of, any of the clients that we serve. Talked a little bit about some of the vouchers, the variety of programs. And I do wanna point out something called the Family Self-Sufficiency Program, which has always been very encouraging, where folks will enter into that. And as their income goes up, and then of course their rent goes up in a Section 8 situation, that increase in rent goes into escrow so that they will have money after three to five years, whatever, to purchase a home. And we've seen, we have, we just had a graduate, we've seen folks literally get their kids back from child welfare, get jobs, get a car, buy a house. And so it's really, it's just how much they're willing to put into the project. So I appreciate that. There is funding for that. So that hasn't been, hasn't been touched. And also an update on Stratus Village, which it's moving right along. I think at this point, there are over 600 people on the pre wait list to, to just be on the list. And there's gonna be a lot of demand because it's a beautiful property. So that's, also met with our veteran service officer, Jerry Wilson. We talked a little bit about the specific needs in the community. We do have a peer outreach, Gary Warnock, who spends a lot of time in the West Valley. The Women's Auxiliary does reach out and help those veterans who are sort of falling through the cracks in some of the maybe home care that they're not getting. But the, one of the significant issues is we've got 4,000 veterans. And there's a really big presence in Newburgh with a meetup that happens every week. But what I've been impressed about is that the veterans' service officers, whether it's Jerry, Claudia, or Gary, will go to a veteran's home or assisted living. We originally, there was an idea floated to have a space at Newburgh City Hall for somebody from our office here to go and sit and meet with the veterans. But it doesn't appear that that was well utilized in the past. So they're going around and they can visit with folks. Again, a lot of folks have challenges getting to the VA hospital. That's where the DAV ride system comes in. But it's, it's a little bit onerous. There are clinics that folks can access close by. So I do appreciate the work that's being done there. Let's see. Our Medical Reserve Corps, which is a volunteer group of medical professionals from LPNs to EMTs to anybody in the medical profession, it's a volunteer group. There are still openings. You can find them on our website. That's in case there's a, any kind of a disaster, any kind of an emergency within the county that we would call them, call upon them. So for instance, if, if there was a, if we had another COVID situation, that would be something that they would do. And what else? I did wanna point out, there was a piece of legislation at the federal level called the HALT Act, which would turn fentanyl into a Schedule I drug. It had been classified as Schedule I because of the threat, and we've seen so many ODs. That was temporary and it was set to expire in March. So that act passed, making it a Schedule I drug permanently, which is going to help law enforcement and our social services be a little bit more proactive. What I was disappointed to see is that our congressional delegation, Senators Merkley and Wyden voted against that. And I think that we have to do everything possible to make sure that we are addressing every possible opportunity to, to push back on the fentanyl crisis. So unfortunately, I mean, unfortunately, they did not support it, but fortunately it, it did pass. And emergency management is planning a full-scale exercise in July. It'll be out in the West Valley. It will involve, just like we did last time, with mass casualty or active shooter, any of those types of things. And we'll be bringing in, Sergeant Young will be bringing in all hands on deck to work on that. So we talked about a continuity of operations plan, a variety of other things that are going on. So it was a busy week.
Good. Fantastic. All right. That wraps us up. We're gonna close this out 10:38. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming. Thanks, John.